I'm going to call the Star City Council meeting to order. It's Tuesday, November 18th, 2025 at 7:00 PM here at the City Council Chambers. Can you please all join me with the Pledge of Allegiance? All right, thank you. We have Mr. Matt Isawandell. Wondell with the Cavalier Chapel Star is going to come up here and do our invocation tonight. And did you just turn that on, Ryan? Okay, all right.
Awesome. You guys bow. Pray with me. Lord, your word says in the Book of Micah, "He has shown you, O man, what is good." And what does the Lord require of you? But to do justly, to love mercy, and to walk humbly with your God. Lord, I pray for our leaders in this city. Lord, I pray that they would be leaders who lead justly. Lord, that they would be leaders who lead with mercy. But, Lord, also that they would be leaders who lead with humility. Lord, we're thankful for all your doing in this city. Lord, I know that growth can be challenging and painful at times, but, Lord, it can also yield beautiful things. So, Lord, as things continue to change around this place, I pray, Lord, that we would put you first in all that we do. And, Lord, for everybody that is sitting in this room, Lord, that makes decisions for this city, Lord, I pray that you would just give them wisdom for decisions that need to be made, for people that need to be appointed to things. But, Lord, at the end of the day, no matter what happens in this place, may you get all the glory. We love you. We pray this in the mighty and most powerful name of Jesus. Amen.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate that. All right, roll call.
Hershey.
Here.
Ela.
Here.
Sommensen.
Oh, her microphone's dead, Ryan. Here.
Here. Nielsen.
Present.
All right. All right, everybody's here and accounted for? Those ones work?
Testing.
There we go. All right. Item four is just information on the roads and stuff, our transportation information. So that's out there for everybody to see. We're going to move on to item five, which we're going to start with. Our first presentation tonight is our triple IA presentation. I think it's your annual report. Thank you. It's in the packet. Yeah. You have to make that a little bit smaller so we can actually see the page.
All right. Mayor, you ready?
Yep.
Okay, Mayor and Council, thank you so much for having me today. I am Megan Lockwood with the triple IA. And I am here today for your 24-25 annual report. On the first page, you can see we are at 124 total agencies across the state, have over 2,500 employees, covered lives, and about 6,400 members. Our annual budget is a little over almost $42.5 million. We had 95% participation by agencies in our onsite wellness screenings. And our program savings were an estimated $4.2 million. So I'll touch on those later. On the next page, we just have all of our agencies listed here. Any agency that is blue is a new agency. We had 13 agencies join last year. And then our mental health-only agencies have two asterisks at the end. On our next page is our Board of Trustees. We are governed by 13 trustees, and our Chair is Dan Hammond out of City of American Falls. On page four, we have our triple IA team. So we are at 10 employees or nine employees in this picture. We just hired our 10th. And then a little on member relations on the bottom, so you can see the demographics of our trust. We're mostly made up of males, 46% females. And then just the ages across the trust, you can see age 10 to 14 is our highest with 70-plus our lowest. Benefits line calls. So this is our 24/7 phone line to triple IA benefits team. We had over 8,000 calls last year. And to our staff up above, we recommend when any member has questions on their benefits, they call us directly versus our, one of our program administrators like Blue Cross of Idaho, so we can better assist. We sponsor 10 conferences across the state, and this is our, the way we market. Instead of spending money on marketing, we do it through conference sponsorships. On page five is our finance page. And you'll see a few highlights here, and I'll touch more on a few later on. But our pharmacy rebates was about $1.9 million. This was a 3% increase. In October of '24, we moved to Smith RX as our PBM. So there was a little disruption for members in this move. But I promise you, we are saving a lot of money by moving to them, and we hope all of the kinks have been worked out. We also had a 5% decrease in our plan year for our PEPM by moving to Smith RX. And really, it's better savings than that, but because we've moved a lot of infusion drugs that would run through medical to our pharmacy benefit manager. So it's been really great savings. Our interest earned was about $137,000, and our stop-loss was a 15% increase. And this is our catastrophic insurance, and I'll touch a little bit more on this later. But just due to high claimants, this premium went up this year, which is pretty typical. Our IBNP reserves, which is incurred but not paid, which is required by Department of Insurance, this is $2.9 million, was a 1% increase from the prior year. And that's just really due to the growth of the trust. I'd like to point out in our budget distribution at the bottom that 86% of that $4.3 million budget is all claims. Medical, dental, vision, mental health. 9% is its network contract fees. So these are those networks we rent, like Blue Cross of Idaho and Delta Dental, VSP. So we pay them a fee monthly to rent those networks, followed by 2% of operations, 1% contractors, and 2% staff. So we run a very lean operations. You can see our expenses on the side of how those have stayed relatively low over the last four years. Onto the next page, I'll touch on our medical and pharmacy plan. So we provided info to 54 agencies across the state last year. We rated 42, and we had 12 join. Unfortunately, declined 12 agencies. We had four small agencies that were now able to offer medical benefits. And then our seven-year renewal versus trend. So when you think of trend, this is inflation of medical and pharmacy year to year, and anywhere from 6% to 7%. We always recommend that the city, or any of our agencies, budget's about 10% for renewals, and we hope to come in lower than that. So we had a few rough years with COVID, and then kind of coming out of that. But last year was a 7.5. This, for this current plan year of '26, it was a 5.4. So our seven-year renewal is 6.0 versus Idaho at 6.7. Across the bottom here, you'll see just our growth over the years. 118 total agencies are on our medical plan. And then on page seven, I'll touch on our high claimants and our stop-loss. So for high claimants, we keep track of any member that hits over $100,000 in claims for the plan year, and we're monitoring them closely and just making sure they're in any pertaining programs or there's any way we can just get them the best access to care. Because these are typically accidents, you know, congenital conditions, oncology, those types of things, along with making sure that we have any programs or cost-saving programs, that we get them enrolled in those. So what stop-loss is, is that is our catastrophic insurance. So we purchase a stop-loss premium for every member in the trust. So their deductible is $475,000. So when one member hits $475,000 in claims for that plan year, anything we pay over that, we get reimbursed. So as of when this report was created, which was a month ago, we had four members who had hit stop-loss. They do allow run-out claims. So why at the bottom it says it's not final till December 31st? So this is for the plan year of claims, but they allow three months of paid run-out claims. So claims that were incurred in the plan year but paid through December 31st. So then that, this report will be final. So we do have quite a few, quite a bit more paid and coming back in reimbursements. So, but I do want to highlight, out of these 32 members, 1.1 million of that was melanoma spend. And I'll touch more on that when we get to our wellness screenings part. And $935,000 was cardiac spend, and 1.9 million non-melanoma claims. So the others are, you know, assorted variety of different types of conditions, but those were the top three. Prior year high claimants at the bottom, you can see of these 32 members makes up 0.6% of our trust, but 22% of our total paid claims for the plan year. So a lot of these members, we have handful of programs we've moved them into, so we won't be seeing them any longer. So whether it's something like an infusion program, so say they're on like a medication that's costing $70,000 per month. I know that sounds astronomical, but it's real. If we move them to a different place of service, or say in international med, we can get significant savings. So Sky Rezzy, for example, if you get it international, it's $40,000 cheaper than if you get it in the US. So we are looking at all these programs. A lot of them we have made mandatory. International is one we cannot make mandatory, so we are incentivizing members to make that move. So that is where that 4.2 million that we have saved this year has come in, which I'll touch more on the next page. So medical and RX programs. So those Smith RX Connect programs, co-pay patient assistance, international sourcing, mail order, cost-plus drugs. We're at about $2.9 million for this year. We have 52 members out there that are potential for these programs that we're still reaching out to. Some have declined. We cannot make them mandatory, but we just like to remind you guys today and ask, you know, help and help your staff understand how this affects the city. This affects renewals. So we really need participation in these programs. Telehealth, which is one of our highly utilized benefits. We had over 5,300 calls into our two telehealth providers last year, which we estimate savings around $700,000 by avoidable ER visits or walk-in clinics. And then a few other programs that have, you know, just great savings in our wellness. So total estimated programs that for $2 million savings. So wellness screenings on the next page. We had 104 agencies participate in our wellness screenings. So our two providers that are Idaho-based traveled to that agency and did blood draws, skin clinics, and biometric screenings for those agencies. Screened about 1,230 members. So that is 37% of our eligible members, which is employees and spouses. So we really, every year, just try to get better and better engagement. 18 elevated PSA, some positive Cologuard's, elevated A1Cs, and lipid panels. Of our dermatology skin checks, we had 568 members screened, two melanoma, and 31 non-melanoma skin cancers. So just remind you, you know, our melanoma high claimants, there was two of them that came in at $1.1 million. So why it is so important that we do these screenings, get skin checks, you know, prevention and early detection is really what can help the trust manage, manage our renewals. You know, it's the one thing we can all do together. So really help. You guys are great at your screenings. I'll touch on that at the end. But just a few examples at the bottom, you know, unmonitored life expectancy is 35% at five years. If, you know, melanoma does not get caught. Claims $450,000 annually or more versus if they were to get an early diagnosis, do a biopsy. We cover those at 100% and then just ongoing monitoring. Other example is more in the cardiac arena. So, you know, high cholesterol diagnosis can be a $10 monthly prescription versus heart attack or stroke, you know, reduced life expectancy, and then likely high claims for surgery. So the next page, we just touch on our dental and vision. We had 0% renewals on these the last year. We run pretty low. Our dental plan is through Delta Dental now, and we've heard great feedback from them, by members for using them. We had 12 groups add dental and eight groups add vision. On our next page, we touch on our mental health plans. So this is also a standalone benefit. So we have four agencies in the state that just purchase mental health alone. But if you have medical, it comes with it. So we had 10 agencies providing mental health to volunteers and elected officials. So that is also an add-on. We had over 3,000 counseling visits last year, which is an 8% increase in utilization. We had 18 members go inpatient, which was a 40% decrease from the year prior. And there was 12 members. There was a few that were multiple episodes. We had 86 mental health and wellness trainings. And that is actually, I think, at Star Fire right there in that picture. So they were one of our trainees. And you can see just the growth of the agencies across the bottom. But with that mental health plan, we also have our first responder plan, which is on the next page. So we had over 200, or we had 250 calls this year into our first responder and family helpline. So this is a 24/7 helpline for, it goes directly to our mental health consultant, Shift Wellness. Just helps triage first responder or a family member that is in crisis. Of those, we had eight first responder crisis calls. We did 21 onsite critical incident debriefs this last year, which was a 200% increase, which is great. So they're utilizing their resources early on to hopefully mitigate some risk later down the road. And we also offer wellness while working now for our first responders, where we have providers come onsite and just share resources with staff. So on the last page, instead, we usually do like looking forward on what we have next year. But this year, we're kind of doing a call to action on how we can partner just to continue to offer great benefits and keep our renewals low. And one of those things is considering Medicare as primary for eligible spouses. Spouses may, and may move to their primary as Medicare if they are over 65. And they can do that and retain triple IA internal benefits. So have our telehealth, have EAP, acupuncture, hearing aids, a lot of really great benefits. But it does move some risk away from the trust by moving them to Medicare. Promoting annual wellness screenings. So this year, you guys had 16 members participate. So we would love to see more and more. We know some people do utilize their PCP, so they might not come to our onsite screening. But we calculated 57 eligible members between employees and spouses. So we would just love to continue to see that grow. Encourage enrollment in Smith RX programs. So this is that mail order, alternatives, international. And I can tell you that you guys do not have anybody that we need to enroll. We got everybody moved, so that's great. Reporting major accidents to triple IA. So this is just ensuring that workers' comp and third-party liability claims processed correctly. So just letting us know early. Selecting a wellness champion, which you guys have done that. And then just sharing our resources and just making sure spouses are getting engaged as well so that we can all work together. All right. If you have any questions, I would love to answer. I know that's a lot of information.
I do have a question, though.
Yes.
So on page six, you have 10 declined agencies. Is that agencies that declined to do it, or you guys declined the agencies for being participants?
Correct. Yeah, so we rated 42. Out of those, we had to decline 10. We use medical underwriting, and sometimes they're just too big of a risk to the trust at that time. Or they might be too large, and we've already taken on too many agencies at that point. So we typically tell them, you know, give it a year and apply again, and we'll see if you have a better risk. Or, you know, sometimes they may know that they have a high claimant on, or somebody, you know, going through that. So we're different in that way than going to an insurance company. They're age-rated, so they're not going to look at history. But since we're self-funded, we do that medical underwriting, so yeah.
Any questions?
Any questions?
Ms. Megan?
All right. Um, I do, thank you.
Councilwoman.
I'm on that same page. You mentioned for budgeting, like you said something about budgeting for 10% for the next year. Did it, so as we look at our budget, you're recommending a 10%?
Increase.
Increase.
We always tell agencies budget 10, but we hope to come in lower. But I can tell you right now, since I do our data, we're having a good year. We're looking better. Last year, we had our highest claimant we've ever had was like $6.5 million. So we got a lot of that back thanks to our stop-loss, but that's why we had our stop-loss increase for that plan year. So we say 10%, but our goal, you know, we would love to come in more around 6, 7, 8. But as you can see in '23, that was when we had a lot of those COVID claims hit. So we were at a 12%. So it's really hard to say. So we always just say budget 10 to be safe.
And then for the vision and dental, that looked like it was five?
Yeah. Those are really low renewals. 2% equals a dollar so on vision. So but typically those ones, you know, since it's not, is risk of dental and vision, we don't see that big of a change. So it's really just unless Blue Cross, or sorry, Delta Dental or VSP decides to up reimbursement rates, we might see a change here, but for the most part, those stay pretty steady. I believe with vision, we've only taken a $5 increase over the last seven years, so pretty minimal.
Thank you.
All right. Mayor Chabwick. Councilman, thank you.
Sorry, one more question. Can you talk about the possibility or reasons behind not having flex spending or health savings accounts as part of the plan?
So we don't offer it. That is typically something that the agents would offer. As, so since we are joint power, a lot of our agencies may offer that through their own internal program, where they have VIBAS, or they do a health savings, or a HRA. So we have not looked at offering it as a trust. That's a great question. I have not been asked that before, but I believe since we are pooled, and each agency has their own employee policy and internal policy, but I do know a lot of groups do offer that. So I don't know. Shelley, do you know anything if that's been something in the past?
It hasn't been here. I had asked that when I came on, because I'm used to having a flexible spending. I'd asked a few people who weren't as interested in it, so I had dropped it. But I would be happy to look at it again. I had contacted a couple of companies to see what that would be for us. So that's something you'd like me to look into.
Okay, thank you. Perfect. Any other questions? Thank you.
All right, thank you, guys.
All right. Ms. Elaine with VRT, she's Executive Director for VRT, is going to give us a report as well.
Well, thanks for having me. I wanted to come when it's not budget time, so we could just have a conversation instead of having arguments about whether there's enough money or not. And I know there's never enough. So Elaine Clegg, CEO of Valley Regional Transit. Having served on the Boise City Council, I've been watching with a lot of concern with revenue shortages that so many of our cities and counties are facing as a result of some of the legislation. I know you guys have been hit about the hardest. And so certainly understand that budgeting is a tough, tough thing for the City of Star right now. I thought if I came down and we just had a conversation about what we're doing, the things that we see in the future, and maybe the possibility of some planning for some of those things in the future would help. So let's see, which button am I supposed to push? Well, let's see. There we go. Oh, oh. It isn't working, though. Okay. Okay. Okay.
Okay.
It is working there.
It's working.
Okay.
Backwards, and then you can highlight with the.
With that. Perfect.
Sorry about that.
All right. Well, that's okay. So a little bit about Y Transit, just as a reminder. A little bit about Valley Regional Transit. We have some plans in the future that do include Star. Wanted you all to know what is in those plans and what's next. And then also, a lot of people ask about rail, so I try to include it because there's a lot of interest in it. So transit really is a road to independence and affordability for a lot of people. Those travel options are something that can allow them to make choices that they otherwise might not be able to. There is an economic benefit. We've done a study that shows at least a three-to-one return on investment for every dollar that we spend here. And frankly, it's an opportunity to make your citizens' lives better. I'll talk about the folks at InStar who already use our services. And something that a lot of people don't think about perhaps, but in places where there's good transit, it really does mitigate congestion. If you think about some of the big cities in this country, and what would life be like without those transit systems? You can see the result of that. So 36% of the people in this valley don't drive. Either age, some of those are too young, many of them are too old, or they have a disability, or they don't have a car, or they don't have a driver's license. So a third of the residents depend on some way to get around other than driving themselves. We think that's an important fact, because when, you know, I hear people say, well, people love to drive. And frankly, I like to drive. I love my car. I also like to ride transit. I also like to ride my bike. Loving to drive doesn't mean that there isn't sometimes a reason to do something else. Puss a lot to own a vehicle in Idaho. We drive a lot of miles. Gas isn't the cheapest because of the way the pipeline works here. And because of that, many of the people in this state, in addition to the high housing costs, are burdened by housing plus transportation together. And over half of our residents spend over half of their income on both transportation plus housing. That leaves not enough for many of them to meet the rest of their needs. Right now, VRT moves about a million people. That sounds like a lot, but when I look at other agencies in similar places, I know that we can do better. The City of Spokane Transit System, a region almost exactly the same size as this region in terms of both population and the way it's spread out, moves almost 10 million people a year. So imagine, back to that congestion comment, imagine if there were 9 million less cars on the road in this valley every year. We do think with the right support that we could make a real impact on congestion. And as I mentioned, for every dollar invested, there's $3 in economic benefit. We invested $21 million directly in operations last year. We, in the work that we did using the tool that we have for economic impact, estimated almost $54 million in impact from that. We are a political subdivision in the State of Idaho. We were formed by a vote in 1998 in both Ada and Canyon Counties. Canyon County actually voted at a higher percentage than Ada County, over 70%. Ada County was just under 70%. That gives us exclusive jurisdiction over public transit in this region. And with that comes both some responsibilities and also some direct outlays of money from federal formula funds. However, all of our local funds come from voluntary contributions because we're one of only three political subdivisions that don't have any kind of levy or fee authority. And we think that's a question that we'd like to bring before the legislature for some discussion. So right now, we provide fixed route services, not InStar. We used to have a route that came out the state highway farther than it does today, and we foresee that we'll have that again, but today we don't. We do have demand response. We do have demand response in Star, not the kind that's in Canyon County, which is open to the general public, but the kind that is a qualified ride for older adults or persons with disabilities, called beyond access. Since we don't have a fixed route here, we don't have the complimentary ADA services called access, which also provide a door-to-door ride. In the case of access, because of the ADA law, those rides are guaranteed. On the beyond access service, they're not guaranteed, but so far, we've been able to meet the needs of almost all riders on that service. We also do some rides to wellness and veteran shuttle and other specialty kinds of services that are supported by various partners. In the case of rides to wellness, the health sector helps support those rides, for instance. Here's our current map, and you'll see that there's no services in Star or Middleton, and I wish there were. I think that you guys would be well-served by it. What you are seeing in the white, though, is that beyond access service area, and I'll talk about it a little bit more in just a moment. The yellow is those access services, anything within three quarters of a mile of a fixed route. And then in Napa and Caldwell, we have an on-demand system, which is a system where you can either go online or call in and ask for a ride, point-to-point, typically an intersection near you, to an intersection near your destination. We call those virtual bus stops. We moved about 40,000 people in Canyon County last year on that service. So beyonds access, you guys are punching above your weight. You get almost 6% of the rides on the beyond access service, which is higher than your percentage of population for the region. This is again, a point-to-point ride, in this case, door-to-door for people who are qualified for it. It used to be, and I'll go back and forth here, used to be this purple area was an area that was served by the Star Senior Center. A year and a half ago, we combined all of the senior center services into this one big area, the red one, for a couple of reasons. So if you'll look here, right now, those people can ride point-to-point anywhere in that red area. So it used to be that you could go to Meridian and Eagle and maybe down to parts of Napa and Caldwell on the Star Senior Service, but you couldn't get to Boise, you couldn't get to Meridian, you couldn't get here Kuna. And with the beyonds access service, they can. The other thing that it did was consolidate the administration of those services. So instead of having 12 providers and five service zones, we have one provider and one service zone. It's allowed us to put more of that money into rides rather than administration. So again, lots of, lots of people in Star taking advantage of this right now. Our funding for this program is somewhat in question with all of the changes in the healthcare world. Recently, the AAA funding that we received for this got cut in half. And we're looking for a little bit more funding so that we can keep this service going because it has been so valuable. So I would tell you, if you want to, if you are thinking about something that you could do this year to help support VRT, helping support this service would be something that your residents would directly benefit from. We do have some future plans, and there is fixed route service on Highway 44. We think that's an exciting thing, and we want to, would like to see that happen. We also have some commute service on, in other places near here. And we have a future on-demand area like that one I mentioned in Napa and Caldwell that would encompass Star. We, in the work that we've done, it would provide access to 47,000 jobs and 55,000 residences for the people of Star to be able to go visit. We also are looking at an express route potentially along Highway 16. We're waiting for that to get open to, to really study that a little bit further. So I highlighted the service that will end up, if we are able to implement this future plan in Star, and that is the route along Highway 44. We know that just a route along the highway is not going to do everything for the city, so it's accompanied by some other stuff, which I'll show in a minute. The other important thing about this map is that we're trying to produce three different areas in the valley that have frequent service. So the orange is actually seven and a half minute service. So as you can see, Boise, which now has some 15-minute service, would end up with some even more frequent than that. And the green is 15-minute service, so both a region within Meridian reaching to nearly to Eagle and south of Meridian, and then a region in Napa and Caldwell. This is not as robust as I think we need in the future, but we think this is the next step toward what we can do with the money that we're trying to identify. A further step was envisioned in the State Street Plan when that plan was first done, and that would provide 15-minute service all the way to Middleton on Highway 44, as well as express service on that highway. Would also include a connection north-south that would go to the Idaho Center. And then, of course, I mentioned with the new road at Highway 16, we're looking at that one as well. This is the on-demand service area that we've identified would need to be served if we get this other plan. So back to this one, there's a lot of empty space in between all those routes, isn't there? And what we envision with this is rides that would get you to those more frequent routes easily. Like I say, the on-demand system in Caldwell and Napa, although it's not serving as many people as I think were originally envisioned, is growing, and we're learning how to run it more productively every year. Funding is an issue in this region. And like I mentioned, I understand how hard it is for you guys to think about funding a service that's not statutorily required from a budget that's already strained. In other places, there's a variety of ways that people pay for transit. One is a direct property tax. You can see Salem, Oregon, and Missoula are two of the examples that do that. In Oregon and in New Mexico, they have local income taxes that are available to be used for transit. The most popular way to pay for transit, frankly, around the country is sales tax. And lots of our pure services use sales tax, primarily Spokane Transit Authority and Utah Transit Authority, which are pretty similar to this region in either demographics or size. We believe we should have some stable direct funding. And so our board is looking right now at writing some legislation that would propose to allow Valley Regional Transit to have a levy authority. We know that that faces a lot of headwinds, but our goal is to get it out there in the public and get some conversation about it this year with the idea that maybe by next year, we can understand what the pluses and minuses of that are and maybe take it a little bit further. But we're not just stopping there. So, you know, I've been around long enough to know that we might or might not get some legislation. In the 25 years that I've been working on this, we came close to legislation once. And so if that's all we're relying on, heaven help us. So we're not. We're increasing ridership. We did a big service change, and ridership is increasing. With that, we're earning more revenue. We're also increasing advertising. When I came on board, we were about $600,000 a year in advertising. We're going to hit a million this year. We've added both infotainment screens and bus benches to our portfolio and very successfully earning some money with both of those. We're also helping do supplemental services such as the game day bus to the Bronco Games and paying for that with advertising as well. We've increased efficiency. I talked about the beyond access consolidation and how that has helped. We also changed our operating contract this year. We have a new operator. We don't directly operate the service. We contract with a national organization that does that. We directly pay the, to the general manager, the assistant general manager. They hire and manage the rest of the operators and mechanics. We did, in changing the service this year, we purposely chose an organization that we thought could help us identify cost savings. And I'm so excited to tell you that we're, in only three months since they've been on board, they've already identified three things. They're not big cost savings, but they're a little bit. And this, they're barely getting their, you know, teeth dug into this. So I really foresee over the next little while, we'll figure out ways to gain some more efficiencies in operation. We're also looking at some new service partnerships. The first residential one we've done is at Muriel Farms, south of Boise. If and when that gets built, they'll give to us a $50 per household capital fee, and then they'll collect $25 per household over time in their HOAs. That will be an ongoing fee for us to operate service out there. In the beginning, it will be an on-demand service of some kind. Ultimately, if there's enough of that kind of service out there or that kind of partnership out there, we could potentially start a fixed route. We're also improving our pass program, including residential pass program. It used to be if you were an employer, you could buy into our pass program by passes for your employers relatively inexpensively. But if you were a multifamily housing development, those same passes were a lot more expensive. So we've re-looked at that, and we're changing the way that's funded or the way, the funding for that so that we can charge less. And we're finding some of those multifamily housing players are interested in joining the pass program as a result. We're also pursuing sponsorships, naming rights, those kinds of things. Haven't been successful yet, but we've had some interest in that. And then bigger kinds of partnerships we're pursuing. There's infrastructure bank bonds that are available across the United States. No one in Idaho has used them. They're available to be used around transit. And so we're pursuing some feasibility studies to see what it would look like, what it would take to do some joint development projects where we already have transit that would ultimately earn money that would go back into the transit system. Around the world, that's how a lot of the world pays for transit. But in the United States, we, we only pay for it with taxes, pretty much. So we envision, you still need the base of funding to get started in this, but we envision if we get some base of funding, we could pursue these kinds of developments that would let us grow the system without asking for more tax money. We're also doing a joint project with Napa's Water Renewal Facility as they look at their methane and figure out how to turn it into renewed natural gas. We can, we can use the renewed natural gas in our buses, and we can get federal grants that can help them make move toward that. That's another, if that comes to fruition, something that could save us almost $400,000 a year in efficiencies in fueling our vehicles, especially in Canyon County, as well as bring a couple of million dollars to the project for Napa. So those are the kinds of things I just wanted you to know that we're trying to explore so that we can get further along, even if we don't get legislation. So I, I put this in, I'll go quickly through it. Yes, I did get appointed to the Amtrak Board in December. Our congressional delegation was actually very supportive and helpful. I've attended five meetings so far, I've taken three train rides. I see a lot of opportunity for us to actually, over time, get a train. It won't be tomorrow, but the board is full for the first time in 20 years. Congress has not been doing its job in actually confirming people. And we have a great board. It's a mix by law, four Republicans, four Democrats, and then a representative of the U.S. Secretary. And all of them so far are interested in getting stuff done, not on playing politics. So it's really, it's been very heartening to serve on a national board that is trying to help the American people. Right now, there's been three new services launched in the time I've been there. They've been in the works for quite some time, obviously. And Amtrak is overseeing $16 billion in capital projects as they rebuild the northeast corridor and make it a true high-speed corridor. So how does that equate to something in Boise? Well, the Federal Rail Administration did a long-distance service study some years between '22 and '23. They released it last year. You can see in that green route that Boise and our valley is on the map. The question now is how do you prioritize those? As a board, we've been talking not about prioritizing, but about sequencing them. Which one comes first, which one comes second, and why? And part of the why would be, is there a place that doesn't have any service today? And you can see, without that green line, there's not much service there, is there? Without the green and the purple line. So we think that we, I think we stand a real good chance of getting high on that sequencing list. Long distance, that's a long-distance route. It's best supported when there's a state-supported overlay route, as I'm learning as an Amtrak Board member. And those state-supported services can provide more frequency, and especially in regions like this where small cities don't have air service can really connect a region. And then we're also looking at regional commuter service, which I'll talk about in a minute. So in terms of state-supported, the City of Boise and the City of Salt Lake put together an effort to develop this route that goes all the way from Caldwell to low and down to Salt Lake. And they are proposing to put this corridor into the corridor identification program, which would allow them to further study the service and operations and the cost of the route, and move toward actually getting service on it. So excited about that. I think it's, as I've learned from FRA folks, one of the better of this corridor ID routes in the country. And then regional rail plans, Caldwell to Micron. You may have heard that Compost did a study called the High Capacity Transit Study, and it shows the rail corridor as the best place for high-capacity transit in the valley. While I know that doesn't affect Star because your high capacity will hopefully be on State Street someday, it will impact the valley in terms of how people can travel and how many people can travel if we get it put into place. So that Pell study was completed. The rail was chosen as the preferred preliminary, preferred alternative. Next steps are to identify the infrastructure and train needs and the costs. We've got a grant right now that's going to begin doing that starting next month. And then afterward, you would develop service and operations. So if you look at the valley, and we did this as an infograph rather than a map, because I think sometimes people can identify better with that. Each of those teardrops or raindrops has both the population and the jobs within two miles of those spots. So it turns out that 68% of the jobs and 58% of the population are within two miles of that route, which what make, which is what makes it such a dynamic one for actually making a difference on congestion on the freeway. So working toward that, the... So working toward that, the way it would benefit you is that there would be connections to STAR on it. We see the Ford Idaho Center as a primary stop on that route. And any of those primary stops are going to have connections to them. With that, I would love to stand for questions. And I'd just remind you, if you are thinking of doing anything this year with the budget, with Valley Regional Transit, supporting that beyond-access service would support people in your community who are already using our services.
Okay, any questions for Ms. Elaine Elsman?
Thank you, Mayor. Could you go back to the previous slide? She just figured out how to go forward. Well done. First of all, congratulations on your appointment to the Amtrak Board. That's fantastic.
Thank you.
You know, I just want to look at STAR for a second. And I understand your population numbers. I appreciate that data, you know, that's around that anticipated route. That makes sense. What also makes sense, and what's really kind of been at the forefront of growth in STAR, is there's three state highways that converge in STAR.
Right.
That doesn't happen really in any other place here. Kind of in Garden City a little bit, but.
Little bit.
I mean, that Meridian road you see there, that's not a state highway, though, right? That's a signalized intersection. These are, those highways in STAR move a lot of people.
Yeah, you're right.
So, you know, 10 years ago, when I first started having these conversations with VRT, I asked a lot of questions about light rail and practically begged, please work with Compass and start now. Secure land, secure rights of way, make a plan for light rail. And it's fantastic that we're looking at it. I love that. But there's, there's something to be said for STAR being, if you pull out and look at the map of the Treasure Valley, STAR is the center of the hub. And I think it deserves some analysis as to what can STAR do to facilitate the movement of traffic in this valley. And while it makes sense probably to have a VRT hub in Boise, it might make sense to have a rail-bus VRT hub in the hub of the Treasure Valley in STAR Idaho. And access to those state highways, access to the interstate, access to massive growth that's happening on Highway 16 with Val Nova, and, you know, additional state highways that are planned to connect up to the freeway as well. There's, there's something special about what this region and what this particular area of the Treasure Valley can contribute to mass transit. And you're well aware that STAR hasn't participated in VRT funding for a long time. When I, our first conversation, we had, you know, we, we did the numbers, we had six people riding the bus. And for what we were paying VRT, we could have bought each one of them a vehicle and paid for their gas. I suspect that's changed now. Maybe not a lot because we don't have the routes, but we also didn't have a lot of data to go on. And frankly, VRT wasn't interested in trying to collect more data and trying to help that. There also didn't seem to be any, any desire to go to the state legislature and address the unfunded mandate that the state has created when they established VRT. So I appreciate hearing those things tonight. And really, I'd like to work with you on, and I'd like for the city to work with you on, what does it look like for STAR, the hub of the Treasure Valley, to help VRT be the transportation hub in here as well?
Wow.
I will just tell you, Elaine, I just tell you, Elaine, that you just cracked the nut that needed to be cracked. That's good.
Well, and, and I appreciate you recognizing those things, you know. I mean, there were a lot of reasons that VRT was where it was a few years ago, but when I came on board, I accepted a mandate to move it forward. I, I wasn't going to take this job without that mandate. And part of that is legislation so that we don't have the unfunded mandate. Part of it is the data. And I think, you know, while you guys haven't been the beneficiary of that too much, although that, three years ago, we would not have been able to collect the data on, on who's riding the beyond-access service, frankly. But if you talk to the cities of Caldwell and Napa, I think they'll tell you that despite all the conversations and whether it's still a good thing or not a good thing, they're impressed that we brought to them the data that they need so they can make good decisions. And I'm convinced that without that, we wouldn't have any service in Napa and Caldwell today because they weren't getting the data they needed to understand why it was valuable to them. So I'm, I am so excited to hear that, and I would love to work with you guys on that. I will say, when we ask for our assessment, we typically ask for a regional overhead assessment, which helps support planning. And then we typically ask for capital investment, which supports the purchase of new buses, primarily and a little bit facilities. What I suggested with beyond access is if you were able to voluntarily contribute, that's what the statute says right now. Our, our partners are able to voluntarily contribute to us. If you're able to do that in some way, even that regional overhead piece, it gives me the standing to go back to my staff and say, now we need to spend some time there. So doesn't mean we wouldn't without that, but it helps make that more real and more pressing if they know that you have enough interest to at least support that. But I, I love what you're saying because I, I agree with you. If I go back, you know, I've been, we've been putting together this new plan and, and I'm like, but guys, look at this big hole in the middle of what's the part of the valley that's growing the most? And this is the hole that we've got to figure out and got to fill. And I couldn't agree with you more.
You know, it would be interesting to know the number of trips that traverse I-84. And I know it would be significantly more, but, but compared to the number of trips that traverse State Highway 44 and Tindon Boulevard, right? The, the whole valley does a migration morning and night. And, and it's, you know, frankly, it's on the cities, STAR, Meridian, and Kuna, honestly, that should be, you know, trying to develop, and we are trying to develop economic, you know, activity and job creation and things like that, to try to curb that migration. Frankly, Caldwell and Napa should be doing that as well. Like, we, we shouldn't be just having this mass migration, but the fact is we do. So looking at that corridor and understanding, you talk about nine million trips, well, 128 days, we get nine million trips to the city of STAR. That's just one way. So cut that in half. It's 64 days, we'll do nine million trips, adding morning and night through the city of STAR. And I honestly, I don't think buses are going to cut it. You're going to need a light rail on there to really make an impact. Something that can, or, or a dedicated bus lane that you can do.
At least a dedicated bus lane.
Yeah, that doesn't stop, you know, every 15 minutes so that it's not a three-hour commute morning and night, right?
Any other questions for Ms. Elaine? All right, awesome, thank you.
Thank you for having me. Thank you for letting me come when it wasn't just all about budget.
Well, thanks for coming all the way to STAR.
To have a better conversation, I think. So thanks again, have a good evening, and I will be in touch.
Do we, do we have a copy of your presentation?
I already sent it to you.
Oh, okay. Okay.
I already knew you guys were going to ask, so I forwarded it to you.
Elaine, if, if, when does 3.0 Future Services take effect? What's your goal? Is there a year tied to that?
My goal, you can see the color of my hair. My goal is that I get to cut the ribbon before I retire. So that's, within five years is what I'm saying. In order to do that, we do have to have some legislation, and we will have to have a vote. The legislation we're proposing would require a referendum, and your citizens would have to agree to help pay that tax. But we want to be prepared to actually implement it as soon as we are able to get there.
Thank you.
You bet.
All right, awesome, thank you.
You.
All right. Sean, will you pull up the chief report? Yeah, it's on the, it's on the agenda. You've been in a few. You can't find it, Sean?
There we go. All right. Mr. Mayor, City Council, good evening. I am Timaines and the Chief of STAR Police. I appreciate the opportunity to present the police report for October to you. I'll point out, it's my first official month of being the Chief of Police. We had 212 total crimes year-to-date, which puts us on track to actually beat 2024 for the amount of crimes per thousand people. If you go down to the next section, you've got person, property, and society. And for those of us who are here or people who are watching online, I'd just like to direct everyone to the top right, where we have the definitions for which crimes fit into which, which section. 19-person crimes, five-property crimes, and interestingly, we had 17-society crimes, which is a pretty big jump. Statistically, five of those actually came from proactive police stops that led to drug arrests along with it. So it involves quite a bit of work by our deputies. We had 379 citizen calls for service, and we jumped up 25, a little over 2,500 proactive policing calls, which is a ratio of about 6.5 to 1. So that's, that's a lot of proactive policing compared to our reactive policing for calls. Next section down, the call types, there's three that really jumped out. One was crash response, which is reactive, but it's a 75% increase over this time last year. Due, no doubt, to an increase in population and just like the commuting that Councilmember Nielsen was discussing before, that, that involves a jump in crash response. And then for proactivity, they add location checks and traffic stops. Both of those are a huge increase from last year, and obviously, that leads to us increasing the amount of society crimes because the more contacts we make with people through traffic stops and proactive policing like Pet Checks and stuff like that, we're going to discover more crimes. Would you mind scrolling to the top, please? All right, for our number of arrests, 15 total. Those three DUIs, one of those DUIs actually involved a separate drug arrest on the same DUI, so they just detected two crimes on that one stop. Our percentage of arrests with drug charges, it remains basically steady. Citations, infractions, 56, misdemeanor, 21. So good numbers. We've had five mental hold cases. I don't think it's any secret that occasionally in this time of year, we start to see an increase in that. I actually went back through our numbers just for the city of STAR to see if we're seeing an increase. And really, what we're seeing is just a continuation of the same trend. So unlike the rest of the valley, we're not really dealing with more mental health issues in the city of STAR. It's just pretty much the same as it's always been. Our Code 3 response times for in-STAR response remains below our goal. Slightly above for outside of STAR, four minutes and six seconds. However, one of those responses outside the city of STAR actually involved a call where the location was on the border of Ada County and Canyon. However, the suspect was moving. So when deputies contacted that suspect, it didn't stop the timer. So our response time on that specific call was nine minutes because it was nine minutes later where someone went to the original scene for an unrelated reason, and our software tagged that as when they arrived. So this number is a little warped. I'm confident it's going to look better in the future. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions or address concerns.
Any questions for Chief? You got one?
Welcome aboard.
Thanks, sir.
Yeah, well done on your first one. There's many more to go.
See you in 30 days.
And, and you know, the drug, the drug stuff, we're starting to see, our guys are seeing more of it, starting to come through 44, is that?
It, it will come and go. They're all friends for the most part. We're dealing with a very small percent of the population that creates these issues. We saw the same thing in other, you see the same thing in other contract cities. It will rise, word will get out, it'll drop, and then they'll, you know, move to Meridian or come up to STAR, go to Eagle. That'll drop there and then rise somewhere else. They have to travel somewhere. So as long as the deputies remain proactive, we put the dogs at work, we're going to continue to find this stuff. But it'll, it'll rise and fall over.
Awesome.
Mayor Chadwick?
Yes, ma'am.
Just, I do have a question. So the domestic violence, so October was domestic violence month, and I saw like it is higher than, I think last year we had two, and this year, this month, we had seven. So is it sometimes that seven, is that, that be the same person? Or are those all seven different people?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Solomonsen, without researching it, I can't say. But we tend to visit the same houses over and over and over. So I, I'm pretty confident we may be dealing with the same people again.
Okay.
That, that's a possibility.
Okay, that's just my question, thank you.
All right. Any further questions, Chief? All right, thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. All right, move on to the quarterly financial report. I'm going to do this for Michelle. His deputies were clapping for him, that was awesome. I'm going to do this for Michelle, she's out with her family tonight. So if you look at our year-end, our revenues were at $28,296, and our expenses were at $27,966. So we were under by about $400,000. We do have our audit scheduled, I believe it's for January 7th. For this fiscal year, I think is what she told me today. Yeah, so it's way earlier than we have been doing in the past, that, as we've talked about before, our 1.4 million is included in that, from the state sales tax revenue that they were withholding until those previous audits were done, came in in the month of October and is included in that number there. Okay? Any questions?
Mayor Chadwick?
Yep.
So appreciate having this quarterly report. In the future, is it possible that we could get, and this is like the basic information, right? Like just bare bones, in the future, could we get a little bit more information?
What do you want more? What more?
I don't know, like, just more, maybe the, like our impact fees where we're falling out at, in there to see.
Well, that won't go on this, that'd be something separate. This is what's required for us to publish for, on the, on the quarterly thing according to the state statute.
Right.
If you want something else broken down off there, just figure it out and tell me.
Okay, all right, I will do that.
Easy enough.
Okay, thank you.
Cool. Awesome, we'll move on to item six, the consent agenda. Anybody?
Mayor Chadwick?
Councilwoman?
I'll move to improve the consent agenda consisting of a lot of items here. We have 6A, Approval of Claims, 6B, Approval of Minutes amended for October 7, 2025, 6C, Approval of Minutes for October 21, 2025, 6D, Longbow Subdivision, Findings of Fact, Conclusions of Law, 6E, Wild Branch Subdivision, Findings of Fact, Conclusions of Law, 6F, Milestone Ranch South Subdivision, Findings of Fact, Conclusions of Law, 6G, Trailmark Station Subdivision, Findings of Fact, Conclusions of Law. And that one to include, like as amended by staff, which includes a condition regarding the privacy fence in Phase 8. The state lots to the north, no residential building permits will be issued until perimeter fencing, per the approved fencing plan, is physically installed in Phase 8. So, all right, and then 6H, Lizflower Easement Vacation Request, 6I, Sunfield Subdivision Easement Vacation, 6J- 6J, Maddenford subdivision time extension request, and 6K, Stargazer subdivision time extension request.
Okay, we have a motion, do we have a second?
A second then.
We have a motion, a second by Councilman Wheelock, any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call?
Hershey?
Aye.
Wheelock?
Aye.
Solmanson?
Aye.
Nielsen?
Aye.
All right, that motion carries. And you got, do you have the wording for that modification? You do have that, okay, all right, very good. All right, we'll move on to item 7, A and B. We had, on our impact fee committee, Mr. Jeff Wood had asked to be removed because it's, he can't, he's having a hard time getting to the meetings with his work schedule. But we do have, so I'm going to, I'm going to request both these at the same time, right? That we do a motion for both, that we accept the resignation of Mr. Jeff and thank him for his service on the committee. And then B, the appointment of Dwayne Norman to the impact fee committee, who's sitting right here in the, in the, in the audience, which is awesome. So I just need a motion to accept the resignation and approve the appointment of Mr. Dwayne.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilman Hershey?
I'd like to make a motion that we accept the resignation of Jeff Wood with our sincerest thank you and a hearty welcome and confirm the appointment of Dwayne Norman to the impact fee committee.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second? The same car keeps driving by, you hear that?
You go.
Is it a motorcycle?
And I want a society crime on that. Not even good music.
Jamming out out here.
I'll be right there.
We have a motion, we have a, by Councilman Hershey, and a second by Councilman Wheelock. Any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call?
Hershey?
Aye.
Wheelock?
Aye.
Solmanson?
Aye.
Nielsen?
Aye.
All right, that motion carries. Welcome aboard, Mr. Dwayne, and thank you, Mr. Jeff. I saw him in here earlier, if you're still here.
He left.
Okay, awesome, we'll move on to item 7C. We go into executive session when this happens. Everybody is invited out, and the council goes into executive session. Then we'll come back out of exec, executive session. And then any action will take place in the public. If you want to wait outside and come back when we're done. Okay?
Mayor Chadwick?
Councilman Nielsen?
I move that according to Idaho Code 74-2061C, we enter executive session to acquire interest in real property, not owned by a public agency.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second by Councilwoman Solmanson. Any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call?
Hershey?
Aye.
Wheelock?
Aye.
Solmanson?
Aye.
Nielsen?
Okay, that motion carries. It is 8:13, and we're going to enter into executive session. And like I said, just if you want to come back, wait out in the hall. All right, see ya.